Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's Thursday, June 2nd of 2022. Let's begin our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. And the First Order of Business approval of the agenda, and I'd like to add into new business, probably starting new business, a quick discussion with Josh Shepherd from Countryside Drive. If that's amenable to everyone?
I we approve the agenda and with with the adjustment, I'm in second.
Okay, okay, great. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Before we get there, public comment, no public here, so we'll jump right into new business and Josh.
Excuse me Barbara for a second. Is there a quorum, I mean, is there a full complement of members or the alternates voting?
Yeah, I don't. We don't, I don't, we don't need your vote. We've got a full compliment here. Six?
Seven. There are nine of us.
Okay, okay, so we do need your vote for now.
Yes. Thank you.
Josh, sorry. Come on up to the microphone. No, don't turn down Bill will get really upset. That one in the middle.
Perfect.
No, we're just really picky here.
That's fine, that's fine.
It picks up really well.
Oh, okay.
Even if.
Here we go.
So we had a little conversation start at the beginning, but the intent that I would like to move forward with is to start a a very small, yes.
Let's just for the record, your name and and your where you live in Rutland Town.
Oh, absolutely, sure. My name is Joshua Shepherd. I live at 149 Countryside Drive in Rutland. And so the project is to put a microbrewery onsite on the parcel where my house is already located. The space which the brewery will reside is was previously used as like a cold storage off of the main foundation. So it's a pre-existing space that we're just repurposing. That was attached to the house when we purchased it in 2016. The intent for the brewery is not to have an open to the public space. It is for production purposes only, so there's no onsite tasting, there's no onsite sales, and there is no onsite tours, or it is not open at all to the public. It will just be for production and then will be moved distributed via myself out to, starting with local sales at the farmer's market, as well as potentially local accounts to restaurants in the area. What, I guess, other information would you like to discuss or questions do you have?
Well, one of the reasons why I asked you to come in was because it is in a residential neighborhood.
Yep.
This would be, this would still be considered a commercial business, even though it's all done. You know, it's not open to the public, but the production is done onsite.
Isn't it, isn't it considered a cottage industry like mine and Andy's? Less than three employees. Why not? I don't know. Yeah.
Yes, so to, and to highlight on what you're saying, the only people working at this establishes myself, I will have no hired employees working here.
And it's kind of like mine, I, my, my business resides out of my shed, but when I have, you know, have one employee, but it doesn't. I'd still not consider it commercial. I think I remember that in the town plan. That if it's less than three employees, it's a cottage industry.
Yeah, we have some salons in town, too, just small places where people do their business and we haven't really classified them or talked about commercial at all. I mean, it's a residential home and so I'm not sure where where the commercial bit comes from.
I think Act 250 considers it a commercial enterprise or or not. When you're working your way through that process.
So applying for a jurisdictional opinion on Act 250 was required as a part of our wastewater permit. But this is, as we discussed earlier, I just received some email notification back on the Act 250 process and I need to follow up because it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It sounds like they want me to apply for a permit for administration purposes, but that it's not a full permit. And I, my understanding without actually speaking to someone in more detail is that this is for them to under, to have a record of the business existing in this location. It and my, what I, if I had to guess is that they consider this operation as something that could impact the environment if my permit or the stipulations within my permit, which is that all of the high-strength waste is hauled off-site, nothing is put into the local septic. If that was violated, you know, obviously you could have you could potentially have an issue, you could have overloading of the septic, things like that. So I don't.
So that's one difference with most cottage industries, that there is waste.
A wastewater permit.
Yeah, and there is waste and some odor.
So the yeah, so the, I mean, the process itself is, is if you've ever been to a brewery, it's hard to describe, but it smells like kind of a multi-bread or hops. And the one thing that this space has, because it is a very small space, is all of the steam that's produced during the brewing process is condensed and collected as opposed to evacuated outside. But we obviously do have vents for good airflow because all of these processes release CO2. So it's good to have like a forced airflow as opposed to with such a small space allowing it to naturally dissipate. So the vent fan is some for humidity control and some for bringing fresh air in, but.
How much land do you have, Josh?
The parcel is point five-five, so about a half an acre.
Half an acre.
Yep.
And is your house not half, is your house not half an acre, sir?
Yes, it is.
And have you spoken to your neighbors about your plans or?
I've spoken to one of my neighbor, my direct neighbor who I share a property line with. But we hadn't gone to the point of really announcing it yet, as all of these permit processes are kind of the first tollgate in determining is this, is it viable in this location? If not, we weren't going to, you know, raise everyone's awareness until we knew that at a federal level, it could be permitted, which it has, and then the big thing was the wastewater, because we have septic and not city. So one, now that that actually has just recently been approved, we're making the next step. So even from the state of Vermont's point of view, I haven't filed, they, I have an LLC and I have a federal permit, but I don't have my Vermont permit yet because it requires the subsequent permits, so we're kind of trying to work them in parallel as opposed to that sequence, so. To answer your question more shortly, some neighbors, yes, the, but the entire neighborhood, no.
Do you think it would affect the entire neighborhood?
The impact, yeah, the impact that they would have would be a delivery via truck probably once every three to four weeks, because the things are purchased in bulk and it is a very small low output operation. I, we have a lot of development going on, so currently with all of the dump trucks and excavators and lot development going in the establishment that branches off Countryside Drive, I don't think it would be noticed, but I think that would be the main. You know, if I was my neighbor, I would be, the main concern would be, A, is there going to be, you know, an increase in public traffic, which I'm not open to the public, so there should be none. And then the second would be, is there a lot of distribution coming and going? But all of the distribution out is by myself, so it's me driving out of my house in the car. And then incoming goods is probably the one thing where they will notice a tractor, a box truck type, you know, dropping off a pallet of something. Other than that, it should not appear any different than it is now.
Yeah, maybe just to forestall, you know, any questions down the line, maybe reach out to the neighborhood.
Okay.
In that vicinity and just let them know what your plans are, either now or when it's a little bit more solidified and
Absolutely.
Permits are obtained.
Yeah, I think it's one of those things. Find out about it from, from me rather than some news article or some review online or something, so.
There you go.
Absolutely. Yes.
You reside there, you live there?
Yes.
Building? I'm just curious, I guess I missed the first part. Where is this being conducted? Is it in the basement or?
Sure. So I have a raised ranch, so the, there's a full foundation for the lower level, but it's only half below grade, and so it is basically, the floor plan is basically a large rectangle, and there's like a cold room rectangle that was pre-existing built off to the side underneath a deck that supports, you know, the first level, the top floor. And so the access to this space is you go through into the garage, which is built below the upper level of the house, right, it's part. And then you can access the brewery location from within the garage. So, and from a federal perspective, that's important because I can't directly access the living portion of my house, the finished portion of my house from it, you have to kind of go through the garage, so. Something we had to talk about with the TTB during that licensing.
As far as the amount of waste or for your septic? Liquid or whatever it is, is there just a small amount or how does that all work?
Okay, yeah, so we had a lot of work with the wastewater permit that was recently approved. All of the high-strength, we call it high-strength waste, which is any cleaner or, or sanitizer that is mixed at full strength for processing or your first rinse that would include any of the you know, like the residual sugars or residual beer from the process, that all has to be put into storage tanks and pumped out basically by like a septic truck that would come and pump your septic. The low-strength handwashing, mopping, or like a final rinse water, which is after you've done what preliminary rinse can go down the drain, but our production is limited in order to the output into the septic will never exceed the equivalent of what one bedroom's worth of wastewater would be.
You're giving up a bedroom.
Yeah, the permit requires me to give up a bedroom in order to ensure that the well isn't overtaxed and also that the onsite septic isn't overtaxed. And then everything else needs to go into the, the external tank to be pumped out. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Norm.
Thank you, Barbara. I'm just confused or puzzled why you need, is this a you have two separate septic systems on this half acre, is that correct?
I assumed you had. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I assumed you had one for your home. And then I assume I guess that the second wastewater permit had to do with the, this facility you want to construct, and I so I just wanted some clarification on that.
Sure, so the, the house does have its own septic and the the brewery's waste, a, a small portion of it is allowed to go into that septic as long as it is segregated from any of what would be considered high-strength. All of the high-strength has to be stored in a tank and pumped offsite. I'm not allowed to put any of that into the soil whatsoever. That has to go through a treatment facility. So it would be hauled to the Rutland city treatment plant.
But how many septic systems do you have?
One.
Just one, Norm.
So this wastewater permit was designed, was required just so you could dispose into your existing system, a limited amount or of waste from your operation, is that right?
Yes, and it also, yes, it also approves the design of the holding tanks and the controls that I have in place to ensure that the water is segregated.
Are those tanks above ground?
They are.
They will be?
Yep.
How often do you anticipate having to pump out that tank?
If it was at maximum capacity, it would be less than once a month. Yes. Which, again, is, that's growing into it maybe like a couple of years down the road. So it would be very probably once every two months for the next year or two.
Best of luck to you.
Okay.
Going through the process.
All right, well, I appreciate your time.
Business.
Yeah, I mean, it's exciting and scary at the same time, but if it's not scary, then you're not dreaming big enough, I guess, so.
You're, you're in the military?
Yes.
So will you be deployed again from time to time?
So we just returned, so I should have a few years hopefully, but the, you know, the world kind of does what, it's on its own speed right now, so I'm not anticipating anything. I've also moved into an instructor position, which puts me in a non-deployment status for a little while, so it would be something even more significant would happen for that, but I do have my annual training and things like that, so there's a few weeks a year where nothing will happen with the facility. It will, you know, basically be like a shutdown, so to speak, for a few weeks and.
But it sounds like this is a good time to, to launch this.
Yes, yes, we've been working and waiting for this deployment to finish.
You're a member of where, what?
The Vermont Army National Guard.
I'm not.
Yep. Yeah, we just got back from Kosovo a couple of months ago.
Are you situated at the Post Road?
So I actually was out of Bennington with the Cav Squadron, and now I have to go all the way up to Camp Johnson in Colchester to do the instructing. So it's a, it's a haul. I would love to drive across the street. I can see the armory from my, my living room window, but maybe someday.
Well, thank you for your service and thank you for coming in tonight.
Absolutely, thank you for your support and I appreciate your time very much.
You have any, ever have any questions of us?
That's the plan. I'm looking forward to that as well.
Good.
Okay. Have a nice evening.
Where we are. Okay, also in new business tonight. A situation has arisen in town that kind of dovetails with the things we've been talking about with building construction permits. So and Howard, jump in whenever you want to on, on, on this, because you've been involved here too, trying to get access to quite a bit of development off Honeybee Place. There are at least five new structures that have gone up there and none of them have none of them have, you know, none of the paperwork, the informational, informational building permit has been done in any, any of them. So the permit tracking ordinance that we talked about last time, it's in violation of that. Bill left a note, so, so that was, you know, a pretty important discussion at the last select board meeting. There's also perhaps some erosion and water issues there as well. But since, since the select board meeting last week, the resident received the notice of violation and there was a conversation with Don Choffey and, and Bill Sweet, and they expect this one owner, this one resident to come to the next select board meeting to discuss the violation.
And what has happened is the pocket has contacted us and we've, we've set up a meeting for Tuesday at 10 o'clock, so the listeners are gonna go up and meet with him and, and go through whatever, you know, whatever we have seen today, so that, that's, that's the result of it. He's now invited us in to, to praise whatever is there.
That wasn't the case, I mean, you did try to go in previously?
This just happened, this just after the meeting with, that he had with Don Choffey and with Bill and whatnot. That's when he invited the listeners to come up. And so we've, we've set up a meeting again, it's for Tuesday to go up and see to see whatever, you know, what, they, they have, you know, each year they've been putting something up and we haven't really been able to go on and we haven't been able to get the information. He wasn't submitting the building permits, wasn't giving us information, and so we were working somewhat with photography for measuring, you know, like an outbuilding and things like that, and so now we're gonna get a chance to go up, but he's he realizes that he needs to follow procedure here, I guess, and, and so that's where we stand with this.
Right, right. And as far as you know, it's all residential or, or not? The new.
He, he has commercial business which is actually in Mendon, because he owns property, goes right up right into Mendon. And his, his place of business is office, he has a plumbing business and, and some commercial buildings and whatnot. Those are in Mendon for the most part, however, he, he did make a a storage building, one or two storage buildings that's actually on the town side of the line, and that's what we'll find out more about on Tuesday, but, but he's, he's got a mix, there's some some commercial that's in there. I don't know what what it all is.
Tuesday is gonna be a big day between the, the listers and the select board on, on these projects, and he's got quite a bit, just meant Norm, he's, he's got quite a bit of, or they've got, the family has quite a bit of land there, right? Hundred and forty-six.
Thirteen acres or something, he, he has quite a chunk of land in the town, yep, and then that, of course, he has additional land in Mendon. Contiguous territory.
Where, where is Honeybee Place? Off Post Road, where the really sharp turn is, there's the little auto repair shop.
Can you see, can you? Right around the turn, before you get to the turn, you should come off Route 4.
And Barb, how long, I don't remember, how long is that, have we required that building permit? How long is that actually?
Norm, we'll get to you. When was it enacted?
Been a few years.
Nineteen seventy-two is the permit tracking ordinance that was passed. Norm?
I was just, I'm still, I was wondering to where it was located and the brief description has not helped me any. Go up, oh, it's off Post Road, excuse me. All right.
It's off Post Road.
It's off, yeah, off Post Road, that really severe turn. And, yeah, it goes south, and you can't miss, you can't miss all the, the new building going on on the left as you go south toward Route 4.
Honeybee Place is the name.
Yeah.
I know, I know exactly where it is, thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, there's construction by the road, real close to the road, and there's quite a bit of construction once you get into the property.
Yes, there were some issues with, with water runoff that was getting into the town's culvers and different things that, that was an issue just, just recently, that they had to unplug some areas and whatnot, and that's probably what kind of brought it to a head. Wouldn't this have to be, it's more than an acre, so wouldn't this have to be Act 250?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of questions here since that, there's whether DEC should be out there looking at the, the runoff. So.
Exactly what we've been talking about, right? Somebody kind of, because all these years, everybody's just kind of under the opinion, a lot of builders that I deal with, no, no permits around the town, no permits around the town, that's what everybody, so people just kind of run rogue with it. So, exactly what we've been talking.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, this, this is at such a scale that, you know, it, it has the select board's attention. And I didn't bring up what we talked about last time in the motion because they're actually talking about zoning the last meeting.
What?
I mean, that, you know, they're, in, in the context of, well, would zoning have prevented this? Mostly, but, but they're talking about, they're also talking about some documents, some zoning, you know, drafts that, you know, that the select board has, has put together in the past, and, and they think maybe they should pull those out and take a look at them again.
The last one we put together.
When I first got on the board, we submitted zoning documents to them. So this was, I don't know, 2010, maybe?
And in Don Choffey's memory, there was one that was missing four pages. It was complete except for four pages, and that was the first I've heard that there was.
And then that, that particular one went to the, went to a vote. Councilpeople, correct? Didn't that go to a vote, Howard?
No.
It never.
No, never, they never acted on it, and that's why it died. They just, they let it, they just let it sit fallow and, and.
And maybe why it was considered not finished, because Don was definitely on the board when that went on.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Jim was, but yeah, it was in action. There was a survey of the town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tom Turner sent out the survey. And it was, and seventy-seven percent of the people wanted
water, right?
Some form of zoning.
Yep.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, the next meeting, if there's time, I'll bring up what, what we've been talking about and the additions we think could go into the permit tracking ordinance and that we want to go to the town attorney and maybe Vermont legal cities and towns too and get some advice.
Maybe we should talk about this, I made this up, I can pass this out to everybody. This is strictly a work in progress here, so but this would be something that we, I got some more. I mean, I think we got enough for everybody.
Just a single sheet, right?
Yeah.
So just this, instead of having somebody, you know, what, what the ordinance now says, submit a sketch, but at least here you would have some idea if somebody had to fill out a form such as this, and it's like I said, this could surely be worked on and done better. The planning committee, commission and, and the listeners would have a reasonable idea of what is being built.
So Norm, this says house, garage, shed, barn, other. And then take it away, Andy.
Yeah, and then, and so the person would circle what they're doing. Say a house, right, then put down the size of the structure. Gives the choices for the basement, type of basement, the number of stories, and then just the number of different things, whether it has a garage, the number of kitchens, bedrooms, bathrooms, half baths, and, and then for outbuildings and whatnot, whether it has, whether they're semi-finished or whether they're just, you know, open barns. And, and as I said, the, the main, my thought on this is just the fact that then the listeners and everyone would have a, a much clearer idea of what someone is putting up. I mean, you could have two structures that look identical. One could be completely finished inside, one is open, and the one should be valued at, at double what the other one is. And the way it is now, I mean, you just the listeners can really do, not do a whole lot more than get a picture, from what I understand.
And maybe this is a check system too. Well, what they're actually doing or what they told the listeners or other folks.
Right, and if it, and if it didn't, if people refused to fill it out, I mean, then the listeners could just say, well, just, we just assume everything. You know, if you don't say. The guy, the listeners need to go out and, and, and view what's there, that's typically what, what happened, I mean, we get the permit. We need to go out and see it, basically. Well, this is along the line of what I, I think, when I talk with you about it, right? This doesn't go in conflict with anything that that you would be doing, right? Or at least it's not my intent to have it in conflict, I just. We wouldn't do an, we wouldn't do an assessment just from a sheet, we, we.
You do a non-.
Yeah. This is just.
This is just for information before you start the assessment. So, so you check, you check, you check, you know, it's a check for you. You check, you check, you know, it's a check for you on what they said they're they're doing.
But it seems like the problem now is still that. People don't know that that. Notice that work notice has to be filed. And I I guess.
You know what I, what I just, for the circle this time, I I put an article in there. About building permits to alert everybody that, yes, we have them. I also did that. For nine-one-one numbering, but I, that's to be in the circle this time to try to get. Get the attention of the public that, that yes, we have building permits. And if you. There's no fee for them, but. If you violate. The permit policy, there there are fines and penalties. So I just. And told them, you know, how to contact us to get them, contact Bill or the listers and or whatever, and or or website and. So I just try to get the word out there to, because I think part of it is, you know, we're receiving permits from some people. Then there's other people. That aren't aware of it. They they don't, because we've never had permits before. Probably majority of people just figure we don't have them. The town doesn't require them. So. It's a process of educating the the. Public.
Right, that there is an informational permit there. We're not checking off on the work that they do. We just want to know that something's going on. So Andy, uh, thank you for this.
We're just.
Do you see this as as part of the ordinance, the permit?
I would think this would be something this or something similar will be given to Billy Sweet and people come in to get. To file that permit. And then they would just something that it's easy for the uh the person to fill out. Make, you know, take them just a few minutes to fill it out accurately and and. Then the town would know what is going on.
Yeah, and and along with the building permit, that ordinance that we have that. Talks about the fines and penalties and all that stuff. I think that ought to be part of the building permit, because. Uh, basically. Leads it up to the property owner to look up that ordinance information. And so that, you know, you gotta go hunting for it. And I'm not sure how many, probably nine out of ten wouldn't go hunting for it. But but if it was attached in part. If it was with a building permit, it was attached to it, and there would be no question. The these, this is what it is. These are penalties and so forth. If you don't comply, but I think it's important to get that. Get that on there. They don't, don't make the public go searching and digging.
No, no.
I think the website should actually say, I mean, for the starters, on their building permits are required in Rockland Town. You don't, you know, no ambiguity or anything about it, just to have it stated flat out. As one of the line items there on that, on when you go on the town website.
We we gotta get the word out that it'll be more with it.
Yeah.
Well, well, yeah, excuse me a second. Um, two things. Barbara Mary Beth is waiting to get in. Uh, does it appear on?
Oops. Thanks, Norm.
Okay.
Mary Beth, my apologies.
Of course, she bunched me out of the voting roll, so I don't know.
Well, Norman, just be happy that she's not muting you.
Just be happy what? She's not muting you. I hate to ask for vote on that. My my other comment.
Sorry, Mary Beth, uh, Bill's not here tonight. And I I forgot to keep checking.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, that's fine.
It wasn't. Hopefully, it wasn't for thirty-five minutes.
Thirty-four, but that's okay. I get to reread all the materials. So now I'm uh, I'm well-versed in what we'll be talking about.
I I would, now my other comment was, I'd just like to underscore what Howard said. And I'm sure, I'm sure Jerry and Andy, you're aware of it. I mean, the Brooklyn Town is just known. To be. Open. And so it is a challenge to get the word out and. Uh, I doubt that one article in the. Circle was was enough, I think. Website and. Goodness, goodness knows where else, but it needs to be almost a campaign once we get. Some of this stuff in place. Serious communication effort, comprehensive.
I guess it was, it's the first penalty that really got this thing going. That's, it's the first time the select board took any action on it. And that's what really brought this to a head.
It was, yeah, the penalty times five. That's like, wow.
Seems like even the, those violations, this just an opinion, should be the, the amount should be more. Not like fourth violation is like two hundred and fifty dollars. I'm thinking if somebody gets to the point of doing. That many times and they know, I thought that that should be more to kind of make a stance, but that's.
Need to post a sign at the transfer station, then everybody will know.
That's a good point. That's a great, great point. One place to get the word out and then the dump, better place.
Fewer and fewer people are using the dump, but.
Fewer?
Yeah, seems like. The commercial services are making a dent in the. Who you see at the, at the transfer station. But it is a good place. Regardless. Okay, great ideas. I can see how, I can. Wait and see how things go at the slickboard meeting with um Honeybee Place. Or do you think that we should just run this by the town attorney now? If there might be any issues.
But run what by the town?
You mean, what what Andy has been proposing here this evening? You know, the adding the questionnaire to the uh informational permit. Maybe. Higher fines. Your question and then, you know, publicizing.
Could it be run by the select board first?
Yeah.
I would think so.
Norm?
Yeah, I, I'm glad somebody mentioned about the higher fines. I I think they're way too low. Um, this is going to be one of our primary enforcement things, and these are nineteen seventy-two levels. Um, even adjusted by inflation, uh, would help. And be more appropriate in my view.
Yeah.
I'm getting a little confused. Are we talking about this right now? Or are we talking about? This?
Both. We're talking about adding the questionnaire to that that ordinance.
So are you talking about running this by the um? By the select board on Tuesday?
They know about that because that that's, that's what they're using to, you know, in their negotiations with Honeybee Place.
Okay.
Um, and. At our last meeting, Dana, you know. The committee looking at at these, these possible new ordinances. Discovered the permit tracking ordinance.
I read the minutes, so I I understood that.
And thought it was a a good, a launching pad.
No, I agree. I was just wondering which document we were talking about.
I think they're, I think they're, they're talking about maybe running this by a select board, whether the questionnaire should be added to the.
That that's what I thought, but then Norm was talking about the fees, which you had mentioned earlier, and then we started. No, no, it wasn't you. It was just, I was just trying to get. To an action item about one of the pieces of paper in front of me. That that was all I was looking for. So, thanks. I'm I'm clear. I have no comments.
At one point, Howard had suggested possibly a list of the permits that are required. Being included with this, do we? Did I misunderstand that?
There's some information off this ordinance to show them. I guess. If this is the order, but the penalty, I don't know if you want to put this. All four pages or whatever it is with the building permit, but add something to the building permit. To really let them see that there are penalties and and uh just to bring this to their attention that.
I don't think it would be a bad thing to add on. I mean, why, why would inform, I don't think four pages of information would.
No, and and it is, it is. The four pages, I mean, we printed it back to back and really, that that gives them everything. This is your ordinance and. You gotta comply with it. And maybe that's the right way to to submit the entire. Ordinance with it.
It it would be good if 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 when you, when you read this, you knew what, just had a list of what permits you needed, not a just description necessarily. Just here the permits that I need. And then add this with this to it also would just be more of a complete package.
I I think it makes sense to have this if you're. Talking about other documentation so that people could be aware. So for awareness, I'll say, sure, go ahead and include it. I have some issues about the ordinance though, and I'm not sure if we're talking about that tonight or not.
Why not?
Yeah, what?
Well, I I I have um. I'd like a clarification of a couple of things. Um, I'll skip the grammar part.
Remember, it dates back to nineteen seventy-two.
Yep, but under uh Roman numeral five exemptions from permit requirement. Uh, number two. A vertical expansion of an existing building or structure that is not accompanied by an increase in the footprint of the building or structure. Or an increase in number of bedrooms. The only thing that I can imagine, so I'm looking for a builder to help me understand this. The only thing that I can imagine is raising someone's roof. Is that what this is talking about?
Cupola.
Could be a.
Yeah.
Expanding the roof on a.
Putting on a second floor?
Man cave up there, whatever. Sounds like it's going, that's what I, how I read it, it would be expanding up.
Not creating more living space.
No, so there's no more bedroom.
When, when I said raise a roof, you could raise the roof, you could put an entire.
Sure.
You could put an entire floor up there, could be attic.
They can't be bedrooms.
Yeah, right. Okay, just wanted to make sure that I had that. So.
That's what it sounded like to me.
Yeah, okay.
I did one in Killington a couple of years ago, and they did exactly that. They put a, like a third floor up there and made it this all glass around. Wasn't a bedroom, but you could sit there and you had a view. And so it was like a studio up there.
Yeah.
But I don't think, I think you're right. That part of the ordinance should be changed. I mean, any increase in square footage.
I agree.
Should require a permit. Okay, any increase at all.
It doesn't matter.
Right, and shouldn't, there shouldn't be any exemption there. I don't, I don't feel.
Yeah, because that that is a perfect example of how high can you go and how, if that was, if that was exempt, could somebody. Put something up that was all glass. It was pretty ugly to look at without even any review at all. It seems to me like. Okay, any square footage would kind of curtail all that.
It just seemed a little odd.
Yeah.
You can't go this way, you can't go that way, but you can go this way.
Looked like Sheldon Talbot.
Well, I mean, you could turn it. Uh, okay, so thank you on that. Uh, the other one is uh the last page. Um, it's Roman numeral seven enforcement. Um, paragraph four. In lieu of civil penalties provided in subsection B of this section, an issuing municipal officer is authorized to recover. A waiver fee in the following amount. From any person to whom a municipal complaint is issued, who declines to contest, to contest the municipal traffic complaint.
Yeah.
What traffic complaint has anything to do with permit tracking ordinances, but maybe I'm wrong, but I was wondering. Why that was in there?
Sounds like a big typo, really.
Okay, so it's got nothing to do with traffic complaint. Okay, I didn't think so, but. That's what you get when you ask me to read something.
Now, I remember.
And I also put a question mark about the the fee schedule from nineteen seventy-two, so.
Fifty years is a long time.
I I agree with you. Maybe it should be five times.
Okay, so we have a game plan. The, there's a time to. Talk to the select board about this Tuesday night. Won't be able, you missed the uh mailing, so it's gonna, they're gonna be. They're not gonna have the questionnaire to look at ahead of time. You can have it on their desk, but. That's not always the the best situation for them. They like to see things ahead of time. But if there's time and then they're, they're willing, we'll talk about.
Maybe it could be sent electronically to them. So that they would have an opportunity to review it before they see a copy.
Right, but that went out today.
Electronic, oh, okay, well.
So, so if, just getting back to this. Do we want to recommend that these? Dollar amounts change? Since we're talking about.
Well, we're talking about changing um uh paragraph two under Roman numeral five. We're talking about changing. Um, section four of paragraph four under. Roman numeral seven. So and then you you could just say that. We questioned the the fee structure, but all of that has to be looked at before somebody would adopt it, correct? Or not correct? And whose task is that? Is that ours or is that? Select boards.
They adopt ordinances, don't they?
Yes. Yes.
But in terms of the wording, we're not going to get this back, which we just.
We may, we may.
Okay.
But this tracking ordinance is in force right now, correct? Has it, has it written?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as was sent out to to this group. That is what's on the books. Yeah, I mean, I I see it as ass, sharing the questionnaire with them and asking them. If they want some help. With a couple of areas where we think some changes need to be made. The fine schedule, since it's fifty years old. And the enforcement section. And I guess publicizing. Right down the road. That sound like a game plan?
And what about the exemption? From the permit that Andy was saying we probably should not exempt, just remove that, I don't know.
Right. Right, that that is. Five, two.
Yep.
I'm I'm a little, you know, we're recommending that they remove this. But we're not going to recommend that they change the dollar amounts. I mean.
No, we are.
Oh, he's, she said, she put that on it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
To review the fee schedule.
Okay.
So there are three things. And they can either send that back to us to do, or they can do it themselves, right?
Mm-hmm, and and are we including the list of uh permits that are required, or is that something that we want to wait on?
I don't, in thinking about that for a second, I don't think we should get into that. Because. The other permits required are from other agencies outside of the town. And for us. Either we're gonna have to make sure that we have everything so that. So that somebody can't come back and say to us, oh, you didn't tell us we needed to go to the such and such agency. I think that has to be on each individual um. Potential builder, or however you want to say it. They have to know what, what state permits they need to get.
If it comes back to us, could we put in there something like? That it's, you know, encourage that every applicant. Review all permits because the town is, you know, or something like that. Just a small paragraph that suggests that they at least look.
Possibly these, you might need permits from all of these different agencies.
So is a construction permit considered included in the purpose statement? Because it doesn't actually say construction. What it says is. Including without limitation, nine-one-one registration, subdivision of land, access to public highways, construction within flood hazard areas. Uh, evacu- uh. Uh, excavation or installations. Uh, within public highway right of ways, sewer allocation and connection, public water connection, and the construction of telecommunications facilities. Uh, if if we really want this to apply to construction in general, why do we just have construction within flood hazard areas? So my 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 question to that might be, why don't we just remove that if we're. Removing an exemption that really talks about construction on a building and not necessarily when the flood hazard area. That is the, um, the first, second, third, it's the fourth, uh, line under the purpose. I mean, we could just, you could just say construction and then there's strike within flood hazard area, I don't know.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if there's a statutory reason why that's in there. Um, that'd be something for the town attorney.
Okay.
But it's no.
I, I think just pointing out how old this document is and that it requires, uh, quite a bit of review and, and. To look for things that may be different now.
Right.
As opposed to just.
Right, right, yeah. Maybe we should have the attorney look at, look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hands up, Norm's hands up.
Sorry, Norm, go ahead.
Yeah, I, Jerry mentioned something. I want to come sort of from what Jerry and Andy said. Um, I'd be inclined to just put something in, uh. Uh, just a sentence that says, uh, the applicant is encouraged to check to see if, uh, any state. Permits are required, period. So at least they're on notice. If they didn't do what we've, you know, and there's a violation, we told them. Um, uh, to check it, and I think. It doesn't hurt us and it certainly, hopefully makes for less trouble down the line.
Norman, are you asking about adding that question to the, uh, questionnaire that, um, Andy offered us? Is that, is that what you're asking?
I've, I've got, kind of got lost on which is which, but, uh, Andy mentioned something, uh. Jerry said something after Andy about, you know, informing of the applicant. And bringing to their attention, and when he mentioned, um, you know, just a short sentence about something, it. Light went off in my head to just add something about the state permits. I don't know whether that's on Andy's application or Andy's. Or whether it was intended to be part of the tracking ordinance, but in either event, I think it's in our interest. To at least put people on notice. There may be some state requirements that they ought to check into. And we're not telling them, we're not, Andy was concerned about, well, we might miss one if we put them all in. And I think that if we start making a list, I think that's correct. But just a general statement that there may be. Uh, might alleviate a lot of problems for us and for the applicant down the line.
Yeah, that's a good point. I'm not sure, I can't remember, and Bill's not here, whether it's on the informational form. That also gets filled out.
I thought we talked about this two meetings ago. I missed the last meeting, but the previous meeting, I thought we were talking about something flagging. Or notifying people about, uh, the, the need to look into state. State requirements as a, as an informational awareness. Point. But I mean, that certainly could be added to the questionnaire. Have you?
I can grab a copy of that form if you want to, Barbara. I think I've got one on my desk, of the building permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just grab one, just to.
Yeah. Mary Beth. Mary Beth.
Um, well, we'll see what it says, but, um, I don't think we need to list the state permits. Cause now there's the, um, the state permit navigator website where people put in their address and. Um, it'll explain which permits might be needed based on the property information. Um, so just having a link to that would be.
I think the question, right, the question Mary Beth would be, how do we create that awareness? So the question could be, have you checked the, uh, the state's navigator, uh, permit navigator website? And here's the address, and they could say yes or no, and that, that would be the information that they would provide.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And that would go on, we're thinking maybe that would, should go on an informational sheet.
That's what I would think too.
Seems like it makes most sense. Here's. And doesn't seem to be here. Goes right into the permit tracking ordinance. Um, there's some basic information on the first page. About reading the tracking ordinance and the dark data project, so it needs to be.
And they, and they may revise that a little bit. I'm not sure if, come and think of it. They keep, uh, Bill's, Bill has done something to it. I don't remember just what it was, but. Um. The more I think of it, there may be a more revised.
Okay.
Copy out.
But I, I think, uh, I, I think to Jerry's point, it would be good to have it on, if this is going to be included. That, that provides them with an easy checklist questionnaire to go through. And if you include. The navigator website, the permit navigator website, then they will have all of the.
How about both places?
It could be both.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
Hmm. Okay.
We did a pretty good job when we reviewed all of the subdivision permit paperwork to make sure that it was in alignment. And I think that's the only cohesive analysis that we've done of, of, of paperwork for submitting materials. So. To Howard's point, I think that if Bill has done a good job of updating it to reflect some of the other things. It's not bad to have a review just to make sure that everything's captured so that people know what to expect. So.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend, uh, Andy's, uh, building notification questionnaire. To be included with the recommendations regarding of the permit tracking ordinance. That will go to the select board.
Okay, so your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor taking it to the select board?
Aye.
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 Posted? And if I, we'll die there. Okay. So we can move on now, um. Because we didn't make the email, um, distribution, uh, for the select board. With the energy plan, um, they didn't feel comfortable even taking the issue up at the last meeting, so. Hopefully next meeting they'll be looking at the draft energy plan, and maybe we can get that, that going. Nothing really more to report from the select board than I can recall. Um, so let's move down to announcements. Uh, the, the townwide celebration on August twenty-seventh. There is, um, some people on, on select board would like to see, if not all of them. Would like to see a, a presence there by the planning commission. So if anyone is available that Saturday for a few hours, we'll probably have a table, maybe a tent there. Um. The hope was to also have the energy plan and that, see how that goes with the select board, but we could talk about the pocket park. As some of the things, one of the things we've been doing.
Yeah, awareness, right. We could have a sign there too.
Big banner.
Same one that we put out to the.
And put some poster children photos up there.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Barbara, I'll be in Norwood, Mass. My, uh, second son is getting married on the twenty-seventh of August, so.
Okay.
Won't be available, but I'll be there in spirit.
So, yeah, if people would check their calendars, August twenty-seventh. I think it runs from like ten to two or something for the most part. And? Any other announcements? Anyone wants to bring? Let's move down to the minutes then from May twelfth.
Motion to approve the minutes of May twelfth. Second.
Hey. I think Norm just hopped off. He wanted to catch the president speaking out. Guns this evening, um, any? Any comments, any corrections? It looked pretty good, pretty clean.
We answered that, cause Norm just hopped up.
I wasn't there, but I didn't catch any typos or any other, uh, wordsmithing. But I'll stand in for Norm. Give him a blessing, you know.
Okay, all those in favor of adopting the minutes as submitted by Bill Sweet. Say aye.
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 And I'm abstaining, I was.
I'll, I'll abstain as well.
And opposed, anyone?
Motion passed, okay.
Okay, yes, it does pass. All right. Thank you for a productive meeting.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Is in order.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, we're adjourned.